Madam Clerk.
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made as required indicating that this work session regular meeting would take place at the municipal building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, July 9, 2024.
Let us take the next few minutes of silence to each seek in our own way whatever sources of inspiration will grant us the strength and power in our thoughts and decisions to be for the benefit of all people at all times. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilman Anderson?
Here.
Councilwoman Francois?
Here.
Councilman Carasi?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Petosin?
Present.
Councilwoman Nudine?
Here.
Councilman Vasanella?
Here.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
There are no commendations and proclamations. We're on to item number six. A copy of the agenda is up next to the clerk. It's to have a motion to open to the public session.
Seconded.
With the second in all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion is carried. We're now open for public session. Five minutes per person. No yielding of time. May only come up once. And council will answer the questions after the public session is closed.
Is this on any item?
Yes.
Okay. Are we on?
Yes. Any item-
I'm always on.
Any, any item having to do with government.
Well, Grippo, 199 Pierce Street, Somerset. First, I want to congratulate the council on what I think was our biggest and grandest Fourth of July. I was particularly excited about the size of the crowd all over the property, especially by the gazebo for the concert. And I want to thank the council for the lighting that now provides a safe entrance and exit to the gazebo, as Bob called it years ago, the Great Lawn, so people are not tripping all over the place. So congratulations. Talking about the Great Lawn, you did some lawn renovation there, which was appreciated by the people, not falling into holes. This is in the past. You need a little bit more lawn renovation this fall, I would recommend. Top dressing, seating, that kind of thing. I used to be a landscaper, believe it or not, but then I became a principal 45 years ago. Anyway, consider that. The other, a couple of suggestions. When we designed the gazebo and I first met with the mayor, one of the things in my proposal was that we would have LED lighting around the trim of the gazebo that could change with the seasons. So Fourth of July, the cap would go red, white, and blue. March, the cap would be green. February, red for Valentine's. Whatever colors you want to use. We do have increased lighting under the dome, which is fine, but that LED lighting would really make it look like the Empire State Building, right? When the things change. So consider that. So that, let's see now. I wrote this down. Yeah, the lighting. Oh, the other thing is that the Franklin Township Art Council is doing a great job. And nobody's here from that council tonight, but Terry Sejo's the chair, and they're putting a lot of effort into things. On August 9th, we're having our Franklin Community Band having its own concert with about 20, 25 jazz instruments. My brother's actually coming down from Connecticut, who's a professional guitarist. There's one request I have for the council, and you've heard this before and from other members, and I'm also speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. I really want the council to consider a digital marquee on the corner of DeMott and Amwell Road. Before you jump to any conclusions, I'm not talking about a marquee that's on 287 where the, where it changes. I'm talking about a static marquee that someone in the office changes, just like we do at Sampson. We do it all the other schools. We put down July 3rd fireworks. I'm not talking about writing a book. And it could be a tea formation, so it could be seen from DeMott, Amwell. I know that question of safety has come up. It's the, I'm talking about a marquee whose words are as big as those numbers, stationary, and only advertising one event at a time. Like when you do the various events, you put it up there. Franklin Day, September 21st, Colonial Park, that's it. Now, what you may say, well, now we're doing lawn signs. What you're doing is you're wasting your money. Lawn signs, like we used to say in politics, don't vote. People can't read what's on these, and people write books on these lawn signs. They don't just put Franklin Day and the date. They put all kinds of stuff, musicians' names. No one reads it. A nice marquee is a professional-looking thing for Franklin. We've come into the age of doing things right. And, and the Arts Council is proud of what it's doing, bringing in all these artists. I'm not just talking about the gazebo. I know that's a favorite son of mine, right? But I'm not just talking about that. I'm talking about events in the township. When we have Juneteenth, that, little signs were around town, Juneteenth. Could have been on that marquee. Youth Center's doing something special. Be on that marquee. I really ask the council to maybe start a little committee. And look, I don't want to be on another committee, but start another committee and look into it. And let me know what you think. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I, I'm not going to ask, several of my colleagues asked me to ask the mayor if he would give a medical opinion about the President of the United States, but I'm not going to ask that question.
You won't get an answer.
That's why I didn't ask the question.
Name, name.
Anyway.
Name and address, please.
I, I'm sorry. Ken Barkowitz, 7 Mayflower Court, Somerset, New Jersey. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to bring to your attention an article that appeared on July 3rd on the front page of the Star Ledger for Somerset County, and I would be glad to circulate it later on. And it ran over a full page, too, if you haven't seen it yet. And it dealt with something quite familiar to all of us, okay? It's an article that stresses the health and safety problems from the explosion of warehouses in New Jersey. And the article recognizes the very real problem that health threats present to communities of color and other minorities. Yet it's important to note that the health threats do not have a color, age, or other boundary limit. They can affect schoolchildren and senior living facilities where a number of residents face health issues, including asthma, COPD, and other lung and serious disorders. The article, interestingly enough, also discusses legislation being introduced by two members of the legislature, if you're not familiar with that, Assemblywoman Katz and also working with Senator McKeon of Essex, that would establish new regulatory requirements for the DEP to implement for air pollution emissions. I believe members, some members of the council are actively involved with these issues, and residents greatly appreciate your continuing support. And since I can't share any minutes with the next speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Beverly Lawson, 2004 Amwell Road. I just have a quick question. Around town in certain blocks, you have the speed limit signs. It's like a data box. Besides getting a open request, how do we get the information that's coming out of the box? Because other towns, they post it on like a website, usually, you know, the police website or such. So I'm just curious to know how much speeding we have going on, how many people, how many cars going through, actually doing the speed limit or such. Like I said, other towns post the information. So I'm just curious, where can we obtain this information? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, council. Franklin resident Doc Cunningham, 11 Stout Court. Here to review a couple of things. Sorry, brief. One is, there's some rumbling on my block among the neighbors because our development recently got repaved, excepting for one street, and that Stout Court. And folks are a little bit confused as to why that was. Are they planning to come back? Is it some cost-saving-
What street, sir? I'm sorry.
Stout Court.
Thank you.
Right. So folks are curious as to why that is. I understand from a letter my wife got in our mailbox that multiple attempts have been made to contact the Franklin Township Public Works Department, but no one has returned the phone call. And then multiple attempts have been made to send an email to the person responsible for Capitol Projects, a marine sturgeon. And as far as this letter described it, no response from that person either. So I figured I'd stop by just to see, as someone living on that street, and maybe Councilman Charles can help us understand why Stout Court got missed in the report, in the repaving in Wildflower Ridge. Secondly, as a follow-up to my visit last month, some of you received an email that added some more information regarding the public interest proposal for elevating, raising the relevance of civics in the public square. And I welcome your feedback. As a quick reminder, that proposal, the framework is built around three areas, objectives, a platform, and a focus. And it combines a historical lookback with a call to action. And again, it's about raising, elevating the importance, the relevance of civics. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to get some feedback from you as we consider the next steps that could involve some type of virtual meeting to discuss what a resolution might look like. And I'm sure we all might have some ideas of what that final resolution might look like. I'm not the sum of all knowledge. None of us are the sum of all knowledge. So maybe pulling your experience and ideas together will help us to make that happen. You might recall in that email, that mention was made about part two of a civics forum. We did part one with the township, with the, with the school board and the high school a few months ago. Mayor Kramer was one of the panelists, and we had some other panelists as well. So we're looking to do part two, and maybe one or more of you on the council would consider being among the panel. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Debbie Stewart, Debbie Stewart, 2 Farrington Plaza. I want to thank the council for the study, the B.I. traffic master plan study. Am I coming through?
Yes.
I attended it and really enjoyed that guy presenting. I thought he was, really seemed like he cared about getting this right. I know he understood the limitations, but, you know, thank you for doing that. One of my concerns, though, he did highlight some of those very bad intersections. And I don't think it's a secret to anybody here that the one at Cotton Tail and Weston is horrific. And I see that Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, there is a warehouse on the zoning board. So I guess this is the new procedure. They go straight to the zoning board, and the zoning board decides whether it goes back to the planning board. Maybe I'm wrong on that, the way it works. But I do hope that the zoning board was paying very close attention to these intersections. And that one, if it got approved or allowed to go back to the planning board, would just dump more traffic on that horrible spot going to 287. In fact, the other day, I was following two tractor trailers through that intersection. Maybe it was three. I couldn't even tell what the traffic light was telling me. They were blocking the entire traffic light. I just followed them and hoped I was going through a green light, but it's a mess there. It really, and it's a big accident waiting to happen as you squeeze along the canal. So I'm concerned about this whole zoning board, and I do hope they deny that. The other thing I do want to thank whoever is responsible for getting that big, long walkway on Schoolhouse Road. I know the developer was, you know, was mandatory for him to put that in there, I think. But I have seen families, of course, not in this hundred, almost 100 degree temperature. But when it was a little cooler, I saw families coming out of summerfields, grandmas, grandpas, little bicycles. And it was heartwarming to see that, because most of the time, they were just stuck there. So now it's a little bit more like a neighborhood. Hopefully, they will be able to take their bikes and go along Schoolhouse and continue to see the lovely greenery that is there. That is our hope, whatever is left there. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Miriam Kuray.
Amina Kuray.
We're the co-owners of Indicure LLC. It's a dispensary-
Excuse me, one, one second. Stop the clock, so I don't use up their time. If you're coming up together, you still get a total of five minutes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so dispensary, we're a cannabis dispensary, and we're located at 1483 Lincoln Highway. Sorry, we're nervous. And we're actually here to introduce-
Go ahead.
To introduce ourselves and to thank the council and to thank the community for allowing cannabis business to operate in Franklin Township. And we also want to, like, give you guys a little bit of background about ourselves as well.
Well, we're twin sisters. We're two-time Iraqi war combat veterans. Initially, we were in nursing school to get our RN. We were LPNs by trade, and Murphy legalized cannabis, so we took a left turn and decided to get into the industry.
Can I say one thing?
Go ahead.
We started off in cannabis as medical recipients first.
No problem.
We started off as medical recipients. Initially, we were getting medication from the VA, and a lot of those medications, the side effects were like detrimental to the help that we were trying to get. A lot of those side effects are suicidal ideulation, depression-
Paranoia.
Paranoia. And a lot of those things, that's not gonna, it wasn't helpful for us getting better and getting acclimated back in to the civilian world. So a battle buddy of ours introduced us to medical cannabis. And that's how we got started in, in the cannabis industry. And then Murphy legalized medical, recreational cannabis. And we were in, in school, taking a micro class to go for our RN. It was the cheaper route. And when it legalized it, we decided that we wanted to open up a dis, actually, we really wanted to cultivate. We're gardeners by trade. Like, my mom had us in the yard since we were kids. And we grow our own vegetables, and we knew we could cultivate, and we could cultivate like a really good product, organic, healthy. We wouldn't be able to afford that. That's how we went the dispensary way. And we just are here to just say thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate, like, you opening the-
And giving us an opportunity to be our own business owners and to make our own money and not be able, not have to work for anyone else and to be able to do, do something that we love. Thank you, everyone.
Bring that act on the road. What was the name of the business? Indicure, Indicure. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. You don't-
The council and-
I can't, we gotta speak right into the mic, right up-
I got it. Okay. Hello, mayor, and deputy mayor, and the council people. My name is Deepak Sait. I represent the Pinson Highlands community. I recently got elected as a board member. I have another member here, Prabhakar, from the community. And the reason for my visit here is for safety concerns. So Ed, thank you again for coming to the community meeting that you attended, I think, 28th or something of that nature. The concern that we have is that we have some safety issues turning in from Bunker Hill to Route 27. The cycle runs so that you can only run two cars, and people, of course, then, you know, just keep turning when the light goes to yellow and goes to red. I think you said that this was being fixed. It appears like it's still a problem. So if you guys can look at it and just get back to us, that would be appreciated. So the thing is that there's a lot of community interest. So, you know, of course, you know, if you do these kinds of things, we'll support you also when elections are there. So please, please look at the safety issue. The other thing is that the speed limit on Route 27 around the area that we live in is, I think, 15 miles an hour. You know, I don't know how you decide what speed limit should be, but if that can be lowered, because there's a lot of community interest in lowering that speed. I think Ed said that there was some study that's going to happen in September regarding the traffic light on Pinson High, I think, Pinson Highlands. So that's another request for you. Then the other thing is that we have, the roads have not been repaved for a long time. And I don't know whether we qualify for repaving or not, but if somebody can get back to us, because we have, like, potholes and cracks and also sinkholes, actually, forming. And if you can just help us on deciding how do we come back and more forcefully tell you that we need this service, because again, that's a safety hazard. So these are the four requests. I don't know if you can just suggest who to follow up with. We would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
So how can I find out who to follow up with?
We answer all the questions after-
At the end. All right. Thank you, mayor.
Good evening, council and mayor. Nicholas House, 14 Overbrook Road, Somerset, New Jersey. Today, I'm here to bring awareness to this horrific deer hunt. As you know, no animal wants to die. All animals want to live, just like us. Every year this hunt takes place, you hear the same nonsensical excuses. People claim if the deer are not killed, that they will run into their automobile. I'm not here to say all accidents involving wildlife can entirely be avoided. Rather, I'm here to say most accidents involving wildlife can be avoided. If I had to guess, I would say 80% of the people have hit an animal, either injuring or killing them in the past, could have safely avoided making contact with that animal. As you know, people don't pay attention as much as they should when they drive. They are distracted by numerous things, which increases the likelihood of them hitting an innocent animal. Let's take, for example, JFK Boulevard off of Easton Avenue. I have lived in this town for 10 years, and the number of animals I have seen dead on the side of the road is astronomical. We are also starting to see a lot of animals that have died on Cedar Lane going towards Easton Avenue as well. Not to mention, a lot of out-of-towners drive these roads unaware how prevalent wildlife really is. Out of all the deaths that I have seen on countless streets, I can honestly say that the town is lacking in creating public awareness. There is one deer sign at the beginning of JFK Boulevard closer to Easton Avenue. Clearly, this isn't doing a trick. People are not aware that animals are living amongst the town's residents. So this brings us back to one of the reasons why Franklin Township feels it's necessary to have a hunt. Instead of needlessly taking a life, why not try to be proactive by spreading awareness and putting up more than one sign that is on a street which is many miles long? We have such great technology I can facilitate this, such as LED signs and banners. As a resident who pays tax dollars, I find it upsetting that my elected officials have to resort to killing the same animals that I am admiring from afar. So can we do better and start bridging the gap between automobile drivers and wildlife? Can we properly notify the public on the severity of the situation so both human and non-human animals can make it home to their families at night? Can we sit down with Animal Protection League in order to discuss non-lethal deterrents? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing? Who speak?
Hi, sorry, I'm at an age where I can't see with my glasses or without my glasses. So, hi, everyone. My name is Nisha, and I'm a resident of Somerset, New Jersey. I am here to ask that we-
Your address, please.
14 Overbrook Road in Somerset. And I'm here to ask that we not allow deer hunting for the 2024 to 2025 season. I have lived in Somerset for over 10 years, and I've come to understand that this annual killing is something that a lot of people deem as necessary and also something that a lot of people seem to enjoy. When something is done for a really long time, there is a tendency to assume that the decision is rooted in good logic and to not question it. I mean, none of us really like change. But I respectfully ask this council to please choose a different path this year, because the truth is that if something is done for a really long time, even though it is inherently wrong, it can have the perception of being right. Most people would say that deer hunting is absolutely essential, like the previous speaker before me said, to prevent road accidents. To them, I would like to put forth a couple of questions. If you were driving and a child ran across the street and you happened to hit them, what would your solution be going forth? Would it be to have open hunting season on children? Or would you be looking at an alternate option? And I'm not saying this in order to be slick or condescending. I am, and I don't want the question to be taken lightly. I'm honestly asking this question because there is something that makes that person logically think of a different solution. Most accidents occur because the driver is distracted or they're driving too fast and they're not able to react on time. Handing out licenses to kill anybody that comes in the way of that distracted or rash driving is really not a practical solution. Like I was saying, I have lived in Somerset for over a decade, and not once have I hit a deer. Now, that could be because we don't truly have this chronic deer problem, or it could be that I am a more attentive driver. Either way, I just feel killing everyone in sight is not a good solution. Honestly, I think it's people who actually get off on killing innocent sentient beings who actually think this is a rational solution. In fact, the problem sounds more like a way to legally justify hunting and killing for pleasure. It is a sadistic, barbaric way of thinking. We are a quarter way into the 21st century, and it is really time to evolve. If anything, I would say humans are the ones who are actually populating the area more than any other creature. We rob every living being out of their home, their food and water, and then we have the arrogance to play God and decide who dies and who lives. I mean, God forbid that we show mercy to anybody who is less fortunate than us. To wrap up, I would say the reason that I am bringing up this topic in this particular forum is because all of you have the power to make a decision. Decisions that are rooted in fact and logic, and perhaps at the moment, it's considered outside of the box. But please do not allow deer hunting for this upcoming season and actually see if it's making a difference that everybody is claiming it makes. If you had the misfortune to be born somebody different, that somebody else considers completely dispensable, you would want somebody to stand up for you as well. I ask that with your actions, that you be the kind of leaders that inspire solutions through mercy and not violence. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. Several weeks ago, I stood before you. Okay, sorry. Hi, I'm Dr. Donna Lisi, 12 Lunners Drive, Somerset, New Jersey. Several weeks ago, I stood before you representing the public interests of this community in an official capacity. Today, I stand before you in an unofficial capacity as a scientist, as a health professional, and most importantly, as a human being, also representing those interests. Outside, there is a gazebo that we have all passed to come to this meeting tonight. That gazebo represents- That gazebo represents lights. Lights of all of those who died, died because they were infected with SARS-CoV-2, the viral organism that causes COVID-19, a zoonatic disease. A report from the Brooks McCormick Junior Law Animal Law Center and Policy Program, which I have a copy with me, it's right here, okay? And the New York Center for Environmental and Animal Protection, scientists and legal experts released a 170-page document on animal markets, which included hunting and zoonatic diseases in the United States. I want to emphatically state, so that there is no misrepresentation of my comments, that this report has made it clear, and I quote, "Certain activities such as slaughtering an animal or hand-feeding an animal are more likely to expose humans to pathogens than other less invasive interactions, such as watching wildlife in the distance where there is no direct contact between humans and animals." The report specifically details how the risk of exposure takes place, and this is a direct quote. Hunters often field-dress an animal at the sight of the kill, a process that includes removing the animal's organs, which helps to lighten and cool the carcass in order to preserve the meat and reduce bacterial growth, while also making it easier to transport. However, field dressing, which requires close contact with blood, saliva, and other bodily fluids, as well as entrails, presents significant opportunities for disease exposure. This is particularly true in cases where hunters do not use gloves while handling the carcass. But even when they do, transmission can occur in other ways or through cuts, which are common. For example, the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, identified a previously unknown parvovirus in deer hunters from Virginia who nicked their fingers with a knife while field dressing a white tiered deer. These kinds of intensive pathogen exposures that occur during this process makes hunters, and this is a quote, "more likely to become infected with uncommon zoonatic infectious diseases." Pathogens can be contracted from live or recently deceased animals. Hunting requires direct human contact with wild animals who are recently killed or injured. This contact can include exposure to bodily fluids such as blood, cerebral, spinal fluid, and saliva. There are a number of discrete potential animal-human touchpoints along the hunting process, such as handling fresh carcasses, which creates manifold opportunities for zoonatic transmission. These risks may be augmented by the timing of hunting season, which often occur during seasonal migrations, a time when healthy animals may come in contact with weak or diseased animals. In addition, hunters sometimes install wildlife feeders to attract and concentrate animals in artificially high concentrations, further creating the conditions that can facilitate disease spread among animals. Another concern is chronic wasting disease, a prion disease, similar to mad cow disease that is 100% fatal in animals and cannot be removed by cooking. Through CWD, it's a nepin found in humans, there is some evidence suggesting that it could be transmittable or become transmittable in the future. Studies have shown CWD can infect non-human primates who eat meat from CWD-infected animals, raising concerns that there could be risks to hunters from consuming or handling CWD-infected animals. Furthermore, deer infected with CWD do not always show visible signs of disease. One of the report's conclusions regarding hunting is that vanishingly few state regulations governing hunting are grounded in public health. Potential zoonatic diseases caused by the interaction of man and deer are totally preventable. The use of non-lethal methods of deer population control, which do not involve people handling the entrails of an animal, can achieve this goal. CliftonDeer.org, which is an Ohio-based organization, implemented a humane deer sterilization program and saw a 41% decrease in the deer population, with an annual population decline of 6.5%. In 2016, New York City launched a non-lethal deer management program in Staten Island, of all places, one of the most densely populated areas. It included population control, traffic safety measures, natural resource protection, public engagement, education, and impact monitoring. In the first year of that program, they had a 41% total reduction in the deer population and a 93% decrease in fawn births. As a society, we're facing new threats from zoonatic diseases caused by man's interaction with nature. This calls for new actions. I saw that the council had, I asked the council to have the will and the ethical fortitude to explore those options. The Humane Society of the United States of America has drafted a 70-page document involving solving problems with deer, a template for conflict management and-
Gentleman, your time has expired.
Okay. So what, so in conclusion, the Humane Society has a sample resolution, and I ask that the council consider this resolution. This is a humane option that covers all bases. If our intent is definitely to reduce the-
Your time has expired.
Okay. Can I give this to someone on the council or, okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Seeing no one, I move we close public comment at this time.
There's people moving, so I'm hesitating, but do we have a motion to close public portion? We have a second?
Seconded.
Within seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Address the public comments and questions. Well, this was a very eclectic collection of comments. I'll handle a few, a lot of them I'll give to Mr. Vornlocker, and some of them I'm sure council will want to talk about. The suggestions about the gazebo lights we've thought about and will consider. The, I like the, or I understand the call for the digital billboard. We've discussed that in the past. We can consider it, but I know that Mr. Vornlocker will have comments to make about that location. Speedbox data, do we, is that available?
So I, I'll cover that in my answers.
All right, so we just cover that then, okay. Councilman, I mean Deputy Mayor, do you want to cover the questions about Princeton Highlands?
Sure. I enjoyed meeting with the board members, you know, thank you for that. We did cover the warrant study at Princeton Highlands Boulevard to do that in the fall when traffic is higher. The warrant study is a funny name to say, do we warrant this location? Is there, you know, is it warranted to have a traffic light? And the engineer from the town that we contract with will look at a whole bunch of factors, including the state highway and federal highway guidelines, as well as how much traffic is going in and out. They'll pull police reports to find out how many traffic accidents there were at the location. And if all the things check off the boxes, then it warrants a light, then it moves to Phase 2, which is, you know, more detailed. So that will be sometime before that happens. In addition, I did reach out to the state. Route 27 is a state highway, so we can like talk to them, but you can reach out to the state as well with regard to the left turn from Bunker Hill onto 27. There was a sensor that was out, so if you guys have ever sat at a light and you're like, hey, I'm here, and it doesn't change, and you honk your horn, or you roll backwards or forwards, when they had, you know, weight sensors, you probably don't want to honk your horn, but, but that was a thing maybe in the 80s, which I used to do when I was a child. So, you know, it wasn't sensing the cars because the sensor was broken, but the sensor was replaced, so they're not really sure what's going on, if it's a timing that needs to be adjusted, and so they're going to get back to me on that, but I'll follow up on that as well. And then as far as Princeton Highlands repaving, I'll pass that to the Township Manager, because I'm not sure if it's under, a lot of the communities have associations and they're responsible or for responsible.
Public streets, but I'll cover this. Scores are pretty high on those streets.
So I would just say in general, too, if you, if you see a pothole, it doesn't mean we know about it and Public Works knows about it, and particularly with the freeze-and-thaw cycles and salt and just, you never know what's going to happen with, you know, some earth sinking a little bit and causing a hole. You can report that right on our website, and it's tracked from the time it's reported. It's our responsibility, once it's reported, to fix it. If you report it, and this is probably public information, but you should know it, and you run into it and you get a flat tire, then we have to pay for it. So we really want to fix it.
Not necessarily. I'll cover that. Not necessarily.
Potentially have liability to pay for it. So, but if you don't report it, then we don't know, we can't fix something we don't know about. So that's, you know, the mayor does something in that season where the potholes arise, where he invites people to please report the potholes, and he gives out gift cards, because we really want them to be filled by the staff. So if those streets are ours, then please let us know, and we'll fill them.
If you want.
Okay, I'm, I'm deer. First of all, I want to say a lot of respect for the Humane Society and the folks that came out tonight to speak about animals, safety, and the lives of folks. My day job, I work with New Jersey League of Conservation Voters. We work a lot of environmental policy. Just to give you a sense of how overpopulated deer are in the state of New Jersey, the number is 1,800%. So the healthy deer population is anywhere from 5 to 15 per square mile. New Jersey averages 270 deer per square mile. That means when winter comes, the deer starve. There's not enough food. We know New Jersey is a densely populated state. They starve. And so part of being humane to the deer population is also not setting them up for failure to starve. And I don't know what the best way to go is. People can talk about that, but, but it's important for folks to know. And I don't think we have hunting because of traffic accidents. People should maintain control of their vehicle at all times. We're not asking for hunting because of that. What we're trying to do is actually balance the population to keep them from starving. The natural deer predators, which would do the job for hunters, don't exist anymore. Coyote and other things, like we do want more bears, and people go crazy about that, and I know that's also a controversial issue. And humans are, in fact, one of the predators, and that's what, what hunting is. My hope is that folks that are hunting aren't just doing it to kill things and leave them rot, but are using it for sustenance, those folks that are meat eaters. I was a vegan for four years, you know, feeding their families, and a lot of times it's low-income folks. And there is some movement to try to make the deer that are hunted available for food banks and food insecure families and in restaurants, the people eating meat there, et cetera. There's some limitations that, there's some state laws that need to be changed around that. And I think one of the speakers mentioned that they did this, basically it would be like birth control for deer, and that was a great response. So that's a 6.5% reduction in deer. That would still leave us in New Jersey at 1,793.5% to go to get to a healthy, balanced level where deer are not starving. And so, you know, the trouble really is there are no natural predators. In addition to all of what I just said, our forests are being decimated by deer. Native species are not able to, to grow, and biodiversity, which has a whole cascading of other biology minor here, so not PhD or anything, but they're, they're eating so much of the underbrush and that the biodiversity is lacking, that it's, has a cascading effect in the ecosystem. So all the things aside that you said about the care for animals and trying to do it in a humane way, those are some of the reasons, I think, the council, I advise, liaison to the Agriculture Committee, which I know it's a discussion in open space, those are some of the considerations, and I'm sure the Township Manager can talk about more of those.
Any other council members have anything they want to comment on?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just, real quick, I don't know, I think Mr. Grippo may have left. Just wanted to comment on the sign thing, issue he brought up. Ironically, Councilman Rahm and myself, right before the meeting, were discussing it. I know it's been, there's been some chatter about it. Long story short, there was a, there was a initiative, it got put aside back after the recession, which I guess now is like 14, 15 years ago, but the idea was to put a digital, and I don't like the word billboard, but a sign with modern technology, not that would be flashing and changing constantly, but something that would do similar to what Mr. Grippo was saying. Bottom line, though, and we don't need to debate it tonight, but there is actually a plan, had a little stored brick around it or stones, but bottom line, we were just discussing it, and I don't think we necessarily need a committee. Councilman Rahm and myself were talking about that and a couple other things we thought could enhance the front of our municipal building. I personally don't think the corner because of the safety issues, we don't need to get into discussion now about it, but is, it's been reviewed several times. So there is a plan, and Rahm and I would, Councilman and I, we're going to discuss ideas about how we can move forward so next year's budget can possibly contain that, something with signage for the front of the municipal building. I think we have a beautiful front of our municipal building, which is almost creating a whole, a whole brand, so to speak, a whole inviting feeling to, to our complex here, which has been getting more beautiful by the year. So if council is okay with that, Councilman Rahm and myself would, would bring back some ideas, and then the relevant committees can, can dabble with that. But right now, at least my focus is the signage in front as opposed to an intersection because of the safety issues, so I just wanted to address that.
Okay, thank you. Any other council?
Mayor, I do want to mention, I think one of the residents mentioned about the state legislatures introducing a bill for Warehouse and Port Pollution Reduction Act, S3546A4679. It's a bill that has been introduced to provide cleaner air for New Jersey, especially the minority communities with low wealth. And I have been approached by a couple of the residents around that bill, so I've been following it. I did put this on the radar for our Assemblyman, Joe Danielson, so he is aware of this bill. I did have it on my council comments, but since it was brought up, I want to make sure that you're aware that it is on my radar and I am tracking it. I also will discuss about this Debbie Stewart around the master plan study in a little bit more detail on my council comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Mayor?
Come on.
Okay. And one of the residents said-
Turn your mic.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Okay, one of the, one of my residents sent me an email about their area not being paved, which I discussed with Township Manager. So I really want you to, yeah, to get into it.
The stout court, which is your word, I will be addressing in my answers.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council? The manager.
Okay, so I'm sort of kind of going in order, I think. So we'll start with, if it is a zoning board application, it stays in the zoning board, it never goes to the planning board, it's always a zoning board, okay? So the zoning board make, hears the application and makes the decision as to whether to approve or disapprove the application. Since warehouses are no longer a permitted or conditional use in any zone in Franklin Township, any application for a warehouse would have to go to the zoning board of adjustment because it is a use variance. So that's the answer.
Anyone that would be submitted now, but one submitted before?
We're talking about an application in front of the zoning board, which is what she said. So if it's an application in front of the zoning board, that means it's a use variance, which means it, it will not go to the planning board ever. It is a hearing in front of, they're two separate and distinct boards. So that's the answer to that question. I think I addressed one time previously, but yes, the pathway on Schoolhouse Road was an obligation of the developer who built Summerfields, and that was why it has now been built, to finish out their project so their bonds can be released. So that was that. The radar signs on various streets that are moved around by the Traffic Safety Bureau. One, not all of them are data collectors, some of them are just simply static radar boards. The ones that are data collectors, if they are being used for that purpose and not simply for the purpose of advising motorists of what their speed is, then that would generally be tied to some sort of traffic study. They do have some, they do have the capability of doing that, but they're not always used for that purpose. So if they're not being used for that purpose, in all likelihood, there would be no data being collected. It would just simply be used as a static radar board to advise residents of their speed. In all fairness, Mrs. Lawson, I would say that your question about should I file an OPA request? Yes, that's what you should do. Those are studies being conducted by the Police Department, so. It's not her, it's the Police Department. You're submitting it to the Police Department, not to the clerk. The Police Department keeps those records, not the clerk. So that's the answer to that question. So stout court paving.
Okay.
Stout court paving, the first that I became aware of any email was an email that was received by the Public Works Department yesterday and answered by the Public Works Manager this morning regarding stout court. Maureen Sturgeon, if she was, if there were voicemails left for her, was on vacation last week, so she would not have gotten those messages until she came back to work from vacation on Monday. Stout court, so let me give a little background here. The township, several years ago, engaged a third-party vendor to provide- The township, several years ago, engaged a third-party vendor to provide a thorough and complete analysis of every township street and every mile of every township street in the township. There was done by road pavement sensors in a vehicle, kind of like if you've ever seen a Google car. The Google car drives down the road, it's got the cameras on it. Well, this car has the cameras on it. It videotapes the road. It took, it utilizes sensors to determine rideability. It does ground penetrating radar to determine subbase condition, as well as the visual on the condition of the road itself. And every road was given a score, and that score is adjusted with an algorithm annually, and this is done every five years. We were done, I think, three or, three years, three years ago now?
Two years.
I believe three, three years ago, twenty twenty-one. So, every road has a score. Our paving schedule has been based on the amount of money budgeted by council. It's been anywhere between four, three and a half, four million dollars a year for the last several years.
Yes.
Then taking that number and then taking the scores of all the streets in town and going from worst to best, obviously, of those roads remaining, how many roads can we get done in any given year? So, this year, we're paving roads that are in the very high thirties, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, from, really, from thirty-four to thirty-nine as a score, okay? Stout court, well, let me back up. Zeller, which is the road that surrounds stout court, was a thirty-four. Stout was a sixty-three. So, stout didn't meet the number to get paved, but Zeller did. Likewise, there are roads over in Wildflower Ridge across the street from that development. There are roads that are in Wildflower Ridge that, over the past two years, are getting paved because they've been in the mid to high thirties. There are cul-de-sacs, much like stout court is a cul-de-sac, that had much higher scores, which absolutely makes sense. Roads that get a lot of traffic degrade faster than roads that get less traffic. Cul-de-sacs, which generally get traffic only generated by the couple of houses on the cul-de-sac, have less traffic, therefore, the road degrades slower than the roads that serve all of those other roads, like Zeller. Everyone has to drive on Zeller. Only the people who are on stout court have to drive on stout court. That's why the scores would be different, even though the roads were built at roughly the same time. This is something that is, we experience throughout the township. So, now getting to road paving and scores. Princeton Highlands, your roads all range between sixty-seven and still oh-seventies. They're nowhere near the time to be paved at this point. There are roads that, again, are in far worse condition, and the method to determine roads has nothing to do with anything other than the rating that was done by the company that was brought in to specifically review and do an analysis of every road in town. So, there's that. So, there's where the Princeton Highlands...
Can you speak about potholes versus paving?
Well, potholes can be caused by a lot of different things, not just necessarily the degradation of the road. And if there's a pothole that needs to be repaired, then there's a couple of different ways to report them. Clearly, you can call the Public Works Department, but you can go online and write on the homepage as a pothole reporting form that can be completed. But I tell you that that pothole reporting form should only be used for township streets. If it has a number, Route twenty-seven, County Route five fourteen, County Route five eighteen, it's not ours. The five hundreds and six hundred roads are county roads, and Route twenty-seven and two eighty-seven are state roads. I'm going to give you a website right now that's going to be, I'm going to ask you to use for two things. It is NJDOTproblemreporting, all one word, dot com. You can go on that website and you can report to sensor failures at Bunker Hill and Route twenty-seven. All right? You can report potholes on Route twenty-seven. You can report any sort of, any sort of maintenance issue on Route twenty-seven or two eighty-seven, for anyone who's interested, on that website. That is the DOT's method of reporting online, just like ours is the form on our website. If you go to our form, it will also give you the website for the county to report anything on a county road, so, just as well as the state form. So, you can do that for any roads in town. I can say a lot about deer. Well, okay. What I will say is that, while I appreciate that people have lived here for whatever number of years, I have worked here for this municipal government, government for nearly forty years, twenty-seven of them as a police officer, thirteen of them overseeing the Traffic Safety Bureau. I would never equate hitting a deer with hitting a child. I kind of find that offensive, to be perfectly honest with you. All right? So, we don't put deer in the category of children. Deer, however, do a great deal of damage to people's vehicles, but they also do a great deal of damage to people's personal property, their, their, their land. The farmers in this town, and there still is a significant agricultural application in a number of properties in town, it does damage to their crops. And as the council member said, it does a great deal of damage to the ecosystem. Hutchison Memorial Forest is the oldest old-growth forest on the east coast of the United States. It's right here on Amwell Road, near the East Millstone section. It has required a great deal of expense to Rutgers University, who owns it, to try to minimize the damage to that old-growth forest being done by the deer herd. And so, the deer management plan that's, that we engage in here is not only for cars or people's shrubs or people's, you know, their, their, their own personal property. It's the couple thousand acres of open space that's being destroyed by an overpopulated deer herd. So, that's the reason why we do what we do. So. I think I got everything.
Did you want to discuss the location of Demont and Amwell?
Oh, so sure, I can talk about, so, so that, then I can put my traffic hat on for that, too. So, the intersection of Amwell Road and Demont Lane, which then gets complicated by the very close proximity intersection of Amwell Road and South Middle Bush Road, is already full of distractions, and it is a very difficult intersection to navigate on a good day without having a digital sign that, while I appreciate Mr. Grippo's statement that the message won't change, then if the message never changes, there's no reason for a digital sign. A static painted board would be just as good. I understand what he means, and I think what he means is that it wouldn't change often, but it will still change. It's still brightly lit at night. It's, it's, it is a distraction. And while I have been a proponent of digital signs, I was glad to hear Councilman Bassinella chime in and say that probably the most appropriate place for a sign that gave messages about municipal government would be on our front lawn. And I have always been a proponent of that. So, if we can come to that happy agreement, I would love to be part of that project.
Bob, do you want to also address the township responsibility if a flat tire...
So, no. So, and so this is why I wanted to just kind of correct this. So, I, so everything has to be within reason, Councilmember Pataznik, yes. If we have prior notice of a defect in the road, there is the possibility that the township could be, our insurance company could be held to pay for damage to a vehicle. But if you call at two o'clock in the afternoon and then go out and say, I really need new tires, and go run over a pothole at two-thirty, our insurance company isn't going to pay for your new tires, okay? It's, everything is taken within reason. There, so, it's not, you know, if we ignore the complaint of the pothole and people hit it and get damaged to their car, and they can show that there was prior knowledge, but it also has to give us the opportunity to go and make the repair. So, that's why I made that correction.
Okay, moving on to council comments, because we haven't spoken enough yet.
I report will be short, I promise.
We will start with Councilwoman Kimberly Francois.
Yes, that's because, you know, I'm always very brief. I have to agree that I think we should have a digital sign out on the frontage of our municipal complex. I think that would be great. We've had a lot of deja vu's here tonight. When we were, people were getting up talking about the deer. Every year, when deer season hits, we get the same complaints about people do not want deer hunting in Franklin Township. We do have a deer management plan. It has basically been to maintain the population growth of the deers, and it's something that has been effective. I understand that some people don't like it, but it's something that we have to do. I was sitting here listening. I think that your comments, W. Mayor, were great about the environmental conditions and the things, how it affects the environment, the ecosystem. I learned a lot from what you just said. But I think we, I see deer on my street like every, every day. Sometimes I come home and I have deer sitting in my lawn, and they look at me as I drive them through my driveway. They just look at me like they're saying, hey, hi, you're home again. Nice to see you today. They're everywhere. They're everywhere. So, we have to maintain the deer population. And the other thing I want to say is that was a wonderful story I heard about the cannabis company, Indicure. I think your story is a great one, and it certainly speaks to why we need cannabis for some people. I heard, not too, not too long ago, there's a prohibition, prohibition, prohibition bill that's coming up in the House of Representatives. And the forecast is that within two years, marijuana cannabis will be legal everywhere in the United States, and they'll be able to ship cannabis from California, which is the largest retailer of cannabis in, in the world, believe it or not. And then they were talking about some of the rap stars like Jay-Z, they're actually putting their branding on the cannabis. So, it's here. It's legal. There's a lot of work being done to rectify the situation where people have been penalized in the justice system, specifically people of color because of cannabis. And so, some people look at cannabis as a negative thing, but your story was a very positive one, so I wanted to highlight that. And I would like, I'm probably going to come by and visit your shop. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did we need to know that? Councilman Embarrassen.
I just said I was going to buy anything. I said I was going to go by and visit the shop.
Okay. Councilman Embarrassen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on the new business. Ladies, welcome to our town and wish you all the best in your business endeavor. Anyway, there was a number of meetings that we, I participated this last two weeks. Monthly Suavejita Board Meeting is one of them. Land Use, another. Of course, I attended the Business Industry Rezone, the Zone Master Plan Community Meeting. The traffic study was very educational, not eye-opening, but very educational. I think it was, he was very confirming. A lot of us knew already. And then, interesting opening, grand opening of a business hub in Somerville by Somerset County Business Partnership. Interesting concept, they created this space, open space, open, open to members to have meetings, training programs, even international-level broadcasting events. So, they have it all in their office space, a nice three, four hundred square feet space. It was a good service to the area businesses in Somerset County. I know some, our town has over twenty-five hundred businesses. I don't know how many of them are members of the Somerset County Business Partnership. If you are not, check them out. It's a good, good program. Last but not least, thanks to Councilwoman Audin hosting a Kewali function at the celebration of Eid. So, that is a very nice event. I couldn't stay for long, but I hear it was a wonderful music program. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Omejaka.
Okay, okay, Mayor. First of all, let me congratulate you guys on your business. It's not really easy to, to start that business. Yes, man, some of my friends, they've tried and they couldn't succeed in having one. So, it's a very big landmark for you. Thank you very much. Continue on your business. We'll prosper. Well, second one is finally, the Glan Development Area in West Minister Road, they finally installed a speed hub. Remember, a couple of, I brought this in off many times to find a way to reduce the speed. The speed limit there is twenty-five miles an hour. It's, they go more than that, up to forty, forty miles an hour. So, finally, in the Glan area of the, of the, of the road, West Minister, they've installed a speed hub. So, I still expect Somerset Park to extend the same solution so that that area will be safe for everybody, most especially the kids. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Karazi.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, let me congratulate the township and our township manager, the police department, and everybody else who helped with the, the great show-up fireworks that we had on July third. So, that's a wonderful job done. This particular one is for the nature lovers. Please join the Trail Advisory Committee for a beautiful trail walk led by the fireflies. Come and see the moon, star clusters, and galaxies through the high-power telescopes with guidels from Franklin Township Astronomy Club, and enjoy seeing the, maybe hundreds and thousands of fireflies as you take a one-mile walk. So, this is coming up this Saturday, July thirteenth, started at eight P. M., and it's going to be at John Clyde Memorial Native Grassland Preserve at ten ninety-one Canal Road in Princeton. So, please come and enjoy that. There's going to be a great training organized by Franklin Township Interfaith Council and led by Homeland Security on Bias, Civil Rights, Including Impact of Bias, Hate, and Bigotry on Mental Health. Recognizing that bias and hate crimes are on the rise, this training will provide excellent information on what to do, what resources to reach out, and where to get help. It's on July thirty-first, starting at six P. M., ending at eight P. M., and recognizing that it's end of the day, food will be served. So, we encourage really everybody, especially juniors and the young adults, to come and considering that our township is very diverse, and often, we don't know what to do in case we have faith and bigotry and hate and bias. This is a wonderful opportunity for everybody to come and learn about it. I attended also Senior Citizen Meeting, and of course, the beautiful event that Councilwoman Shepa had organized. We thank you for that. And HRC Meeting, it was an interesting meeting, Human Relations Commission Meeting, and we had Ms. Prentice, who talked about homeschooling. It was kind of a very informative presentation. The next Human Relations Committee Meeting is going to be on July twenty-four, starting at seven P. M. across the hall, and there's going to be a presentation about the YMCA, and the one that hopefully will come to our town in the near future. And by the way, each year, the Human Relations Commission appoints a junior committee member, and this year, we had nine applicants. And I'm happy to inform you that Mr. Elan Maron is the new committee member, junior committee member, so congratulation to him. And that's what I have, Mr. Mayor, and again, thank you, and good luck for your new business. That's wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Bassinella.
Thank you, Mayor. Few items. Thank you again to the gentleman who came up talking about civics. I read your email, and I, there were some good ideas. I don't have it in front of me. It's been a few weeks. front of me. It's been a few weeks. But I'm glad to see the schools are taking initiative. And I also just wanted to throw out to anybody involved that although, of course, our public schools or the bulk of our students in Franklin will attend regular public schools, we do have parochial schools, private schools, and charter schools. And I just would want to make sure they're part of any curriculum that are special events that have to do with civics because I just, I applaud any of those efforts that teach anybody, but especially younger people, about the realities of the world they live in and how they can create change every day, all day, and be aware, just not jump on the bandwagon of social media type of initiatives. So hopefully I could be supportive of it down the road. And if it works out, would be happy to be involved. But I do think the schools, it may be, I don't know, for Recreation Department, dabbles in any of that, but should take the lead on those type of community educational approaches. The deer, I'm not going to talk about it a lot, was, I'm going to just talk a moment. My, a lot of the things were said, my kind of feel similar concerns, but the realities of the situation were talked about in detail by deputy mayor and manager. And I don't disagree with anything that was said. It's an unfortunate situation, but it is what it is. I do think we can do a little bit in the way of signage of warning people because we all could agree that a deer that isn't hunted and a person that was driving, we don't want anybody to get, there's no reason anybody has to get damaged or a car or deer that has to get killed in a, in an accident, so to speak. So I think we could do more with signage, but again, the, the facts that were mentioned really do apply here in Franklin. So maybe, maybe, maybe we can look at that part of it again. Fireworks was talked about. I think it was probably the best weather we had in a decade. And I don't know if it's that and post-COVID and a bunch of reasons, but it probably was the biggest event that I ever remember, whether as a child living here or in recent years, the council-sponsored events. For some reason, the weather turned the next day. And it hasn't been nice since, but the weather really was beautiful at night. Main book, main meeting that I was involved with in the last two weeks was a Public Works meeting along with some of my colleagues tonight. Long story short, we just got the update. It looks like a lot of scribble, but we will probably complete almost all, if not all, of the roads that have been appropriated in the 24 budget. Most years, we have, because of so many projects going on and a variety of other factors, have to kick forward to the following spring. Thirty, forty percent of the roads that were appropriated, this year, we will probably get all or most of it done. Almost $4 million. We also, last meeting, allocated the final funding of what is almost $4 million for water main work. We will be doing a lot of that this year and into next year also. So this is truly, for those of us like me who, part of the reason I'm involved is the infrastructure of this town, which affects us a lot more. And people realize we are at really a record-setting pace. And I, and I am very happy about that. So we will keep you informed and keep pushing for things to get done as quickly and as high quality as possible. I think that is it. If people are content with what we mentioned earlier, Councilman Rahm and I just taking the lead and of course, bringing ideas back to council, I look forward to doing that. I think we have an opportunity to put a little final dressings on our complex here and settle what has been a longstanding issue of interest and request of council to do something in that vein. So that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Odean.
Thank you. So I have a couple of things that I do want to point out. The first one is on June 27th, the township and by view engineering, third-party vendor hired by the township, held a first meeting about the initial traffic findings of the master plan study. And that was a result of ongoing concerns about traffic congestion, as well as the health and safety of the residents. And as, we don't have the Citizen Warehouse Group today representative, but as you know, they've been coming on from 2020, pretty engaged with me as well partnering to understand our traffic congestion. So this master plan study provided us a lot of insights to things that we knew, but this was more of like an official stamp of knowing that, hey, we're not just here talking about what's happening, but this is what the third-party vendor has provided us. Some of what they had mentioned, some key analysis is, I think Ms. Stewart, you had mentioned about the 14 intersections that were identified. And one thing to know is that 10 of the 14 intersections are in Ward Two. You know, Schoolhouse Road, Western Canal Road, Schoolhouse, Metlers Road, Schoolhouse, Randolph Road, New Brunswick Road, Elizabeth Ave, Western Canal, Cantel, Western Canal Road, and Route 287 South, the northbound, on and off ramps, Davidson Ave, Pearson, so on Davidson Ave and East End. So as, as our consultant is doing their job right now on formalizing and finalizing that traffic study, you know, on top of it to understand and tracking and monitoring to see how the recommendations and what we can do from our end. So there's more to come. I know the vendor had mentioned that a lot of the intersections just from the initial study, the projected LOS, which is line of service, had an F, meaning that the delay in making the movement through the intersection was unacceptable. But that's within the different peak hours of when they studied. It's either the AM or the PM or on weekends. So I think as they finalize and bring more information to us, I will also, as I'm hearing things that are made public, I will also push it out to you guys so you're aware of what's happening. But at the same time, you know, if there's any questions and if you feel that where is all this information being reported, it is in the planning. If you go to our website, township website, in the planning, on top of the icons, that says, you know, the communities. If you click on the planning department, it's a separate tab called BI Study. So if you click on it, it gives all the notes that's today, that's been posted along with, which was recently posted, a presentation. I know a lot of people wanted to know what we saw these visuals, where is it? So now it's posted there. If you have any questions, any concerns regarding this study, you can definitely email me at councilwoman.odean@franklinnj.gov. And I can funnel that through Mark, which will go to the consultant to come back with questions. So feel free to reach out to me on the master plan study. The other things, just things that are, my council peers have already mentioned about was, I know potholes is a big thing. I get that question all the time. I bring it up during spring that if you see a pothole on the roads, report it online. I know there's also a phone number that they can contact. So Public Works Department has a hotline, 732-873-7299, which is something you can call because sometimes we see something we can't get on our computer right away and load it up. So you can always call that number and leave the message where the pothole is in terms of the road and, you know, DPW will get onto it. The Street Resurfacing Project, which is a couple of us on Public Works, we just had the meeting today. The website, again, on our township website, under the Public Works, there is a Street Resurfacing Project tab that you click on, and it gives a whole list of everything that's happening, that's in progress, that's being awarded. There are a few things that are actually on our agenda today that are going to be awarded. So you'll see on live of what we're reporting. You can also go online and keep track of what's happening. So if you're not understanding like some of the rules that are coming up for 2024 projected, it's all there. And you can always reach out to any of us to ask the question if there's any particular roads in question in terms of grading, or, you know, you just want to know what's happening with that road. I did have something for manager. If you can update us on where the camera installation is for the Metlers Road and the other parts.
Still waiting on the approval of Public Service in Verizon for mounting on the poles. It's a process that, and for any, for anyone who has ever put in a request for a streetlight on their street, they would know that that request and the, the process is really no different than what we've asked for as, as far as the electricity from Public Service and the, the authorization to put the cameras on poles, which in our case, some are Verizon poles and some are Public Service poles. That, the wheels of Public Service grind slowly. And so, you know, we're, we're still, and we leaned on them again last week to try to get an answer out of Verizon. Because of course, you know, you submit your application to Public Service for location on a pole, and Public Service takes eight or 10 months to let you know that, oh, by the way, that's not our pole, that's Verizon's pole. So then you have to start that process with Verizon. And Verizon, believe it or not, has moved a little bit faster than Public Service. So I'm hoping that within the next one to two months. Now, there are some cameras that we're, we're very close to having mounted, and those are on the traffic signals at a couple intersections. There'll be cameras mounted on the traffic signals themselves. So those are, those are, hopefully, will be done faster than Public Service.
Perfect. Well, I think we're going to get updates as it's happening. But I just wanted to also indicate that these are items that we have not lost track of monitoring. It's been ongoing. And I know Bob here is from here all the time checking on, on things. So, you know, there are works of things happening. As it gets more finalized and formalized, we will definitely come out and mention them out here. As well as, again, feel free to reach out to me. I've been always available to answer any emails. So if you have any questions around, you know, the status of cameras, which I'm getting as well, please feel free to reach out and ask the questions. And I'll try to answer them and, and get on with Bob and make sure that we are. So thank you. That's all I had.
Councilwoman.
It took us about three years to get cameras up on Hamilton Street. Three years. Yeah, but by the time we got them up, they were outdated. So PSCNG moves very, 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 very slow.
I, I hear that. I think we're, the mission request was, I think, last year, in like Q4?
Another two years.
Yeah.
It was, it's been about a year now.
About a year?
Right about now, yeah.
So that's, that's majority of what I had. I just want to thank the council for attending the Eid celebration, as well as the Kowali night. I think those events, it's more geared towards our community to represent and show the various cultures that we have in town. And, you know, it's, it was nice to see a form of so many folks coming in from, you know, different set of timings and just being able to enjoy the show. Again, it's more the unity that we have in town. And I would always say that we're so blessed to have that in town because our neighbors are so supportive and they come out and attend these events with their families and enjoy the show. So with that, and then the July Fourth Celebration just did a complete wow, right? It was amazing event that was held. And kudos to the entire staff, you know, from, from our staff here. And then Bill Gruppo, who also manages a lot of this stuff. So I think a lot of the legwork and the backend doesn't always get recognized. And I just want to say thank you to everyone that's been working on the backend to make this happen for the community. And we appreciate that so much. So thank you. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wright.
To the deer issue, they show up on my property every year. They eat the grass, the trees, and everything else. And they have the deer, they look at me, and I look at them, and they look at me and say, what's the problem?
You're in their house.
You know, now I just got to walk in the house and say, it's a weekend. And to our township manager, I think our fireworks are growing to the point where I think all of our members are township residents, or do we import some township residents from places that are unknown? How does that work?
So I, excuse me. I have been involved in the fireworks for a very, very long time. And we have always had a, a part of the, the attendees come from other towns. I, oftentimes, I'm approached by people as I walk around and, you know, and get engaged in a conversation. And they will say, you know, well, I'm from Hillsborough. I come to your fireworks every year. Or I'm from South Brunswick. Can I come? Well, you know, that, that comes, we, they're not on the Fourth of July, right? Often, sometimes we're criticized for not being on the Fourth of July. Having them on the Fourth of July causes a great deal of, of difficulty. The volunteer firefighters, who often want to spend time with their families on the Fourth, are necessary to provide fire protection for the fireworks. That was one of the initial reasons why we went to an off day way back when, in the early 2000s. But people come and they come here because they can, because there's, they, they like fireworks. So they might go to a couple different towns during the, the fireworks season. But yes, it is not all, I think. But I will tell you, I think it is most.
Yeah, because it seems like every year, we just grow.
A little bit bigger, a little bit bigger. And then the comments about weather from Councilman Vasinella are absolutely dead on. It, the weather was, you could not have asked for a better evening for an outdoor event like we had.
You should take a poll next year. Ask 100 people where they're from.
Mm-hmm.
I think we should give them all tags, you know, like deer, tag them all. All right, share's business now. If any of you've been to the Fourth Ward, you know that we're building like crazy on Hamilton Street. Also, we have a redevelopment agency on the other side, which is over there by Berry Street, Franklin Boulevard, that, that borders it. But on Hamilton Street, we're building apartments, rental units. And a couple of things that I want to do is find out, what is our traffic like? How are the cars turning onto and off of Hamilton Street? Pedestrian safety, how does this look? How's it work? Basically, I wanted to make sure that everyone had a parking space, that if they couldn't, if two cars couldn't park, from the same family, couldn't park in the, the parking that was supplied by the developer in the parking complex, where could they park their car? And if they parked the car on the street, okay, that's one thing. But what I found out is that sometimes they'll park down on the block to where you used to park. Parking spot. Because I have two cars, and here's my driveway, and here's where my other car parked. But they can't park anymore because we're overflowing with cars in that neighborhood. So what I like to do is ask our manager, the place in RFP, RFP, for a study of the traffic and parking on Hamilton Street, to ensure that we have proper parking now and in the future, because we, we continue to build on Hamilton Street, and that we look at the safety of the cars, not just going north to south on Hamilton, but that are crossing Hamilton, which are the cross streets, that are feeder streets into Hamilton and off of Hamilton Street. And again, safety for pedestrians, cars. And I didn't go after, Bob beat him up for those sidewalks down there for no reason. So we got to look at that. So I'd like the motion for us to put that forward.
So I'm going to second that. I normally don't second, but I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's a motion to do a traffic and parking study of the Hamilton Street business area? Is that what I understand? A motion to do a parking and traffic study of the Hamilton Street business areas?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Is that sufficient? We want them to do an RFP. Is that a sufficient motion for them to do, create, and send out an RFP?
Yeah, we have it.
A microphones.
So, so the answer is, of course, you can do that. And you just direct the manager to do it.
That's what, that, your, your, your motion and second, I believe, is to direct me to do something. Not so much to do, whatever it is that you tell me to do is what you're going to tell me to do.
Right.
And I won't even act like I don't already know that you're going to tell me to do this.
And for council members who might have heard that I wanted this to go to Land Use first, the reason I'm not insisting on that is because the manager and Mark Healy and Vince Dominic, who make up the staff of Land Use, had no issues with this. So I wanted to delay it.
... in my budget for these such purposes?
So what's a rough idea?
I'm gonna say it's probably in the...
Wright and I, over the years, have discussed these concerns and as things, I think it's very important that we look at this. And just as part of parking streets, parking and traffic, I know over the years, last decade, when things are being presented for build-out, the new trend is in deliveries, car services, food services, et cetera, Amazon, whatever. So I just would want to make sure that parking and traffic, that focus would be included because I know one time we talked about making an area where they could pull up and pull out safely because I would imagine the delivery business, car service business will probably grow over time. So I just would want to make sure that that part, that element would be something that would be included when we're looking at the traffic and safety and all the concerns Mr. Wright laid out.
Any other comments?
I just, the criteria that's in the RFP in the past, when we've done these studies, we've had a chance to review that. Are you saying in this motion that it's just gonna be left up to staff and no one on the council's gonna review that and we'll just get a report at the end?
So I don't know when you've ever reviewed an RFP for a traffic study, but you may have, but I'm not gonna go neither here nor there. But generally, it is the staff's responsibility to prepare an RFP and put it out and receive it and review the submissions from the various firms, just like we did for the BI zone. And then we make a recommendation for a word of contract and that gets put on your agenda. That's the normal course of business with these types of studies. And I don't know why this one would vary from that. It is not unlike other studies that we've done in the past, but certainly if you want to review that, it will just delay the process.
And we also get an opportunity to look at all the RFPs that come in. Even though they make a recommendation, you can still review everything that came in.
No, I'm just thinking about the criteria for the RFP when it's written, like, you're saying it's generally like traffic and parking. You know what that means?
So I know what it means. Yeah, I've been involved in that for somewhat of, you know, a large part of my professional career. So I certainly know what it means. And in fact, we've pretty much already written the RFP. The RFP for this type of study is pretty simple and straightforward. You're talking about a comprehensive analysis of the traffic conditions, both current and future build and no build conditions, along with zoning recommendations for the Hamilton Street Business District, which is comprised of Hamilton Street from Franklin Boulevard to the New Brunswick Corporate Line and two blocks in on either side of Hamilton Street. That's the Hamilton Business District and that is specifically the area that is in question as far as the development of Hamilton Street. It is that area that is under the Hamilton Street Business District zone. So that would be the reason why you would study the areas that are specifically affected by the Hamilton Street Business District zoning. So it's...
And then what's the parking question? You might as well just say it.
The parking question is, again, is there sufficient parking now? What is the parking demand based on residential and then obviously in this particular case, there will have to be, you know, there will have to be observations made, just like there are observations made. And I'll talk a little bit in my report about levels of service at signalized intersections. But those are the things that are looked at. The signalized intersections and unsignalized intersections, they're identified as part Would be incorporated into that in much the same way. What is the demand for parking and what is the available parking and what is the anticipated available parking based on build and no build conditions in the future? And what we would look at here is if possible, if... ... surface parking would be necessary.
And make recommendations.
And make recommendations for that.
Thank you.
As part of the parking portion of it.
So I'm not amending the resolution, but just a suggestion to the manager, when you finish the RFP, if you could send it to all council.
Yeah.
And if you don't get a chorus of no, 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 then send it out.
Again, and not to say that there's anything, you know, this isn't tricky. And I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. I can probably pull one out of the past and pretty much, you know, use it as a boilerplate for this one. A traffic impact assessment is a traffic impact assessment is a traffic...
I kind of...
When you're doing...
Kind of taken, let's just say they take on different approaches and I just think it's really important that this is one that, can I finish, please?
Yeah.
One that's taken on with complete neutrality and objectivity and from the perspective of the community, not of the perspective of future development, not saying we shouldn't or won't have any future development. I just want to make sure that these parking and traffic concerns are dealt with in a way that they should be.
And counsel, as I said, this is not a developer engaging a traffic engineer to do this study. This is the municipality. And the municipality has engaged traffic engineers more than once in the past that I've been involved in. And that's the point. This is for us to look at it from a holistic point of view, not a specific point of view as a developer does. So yes, it does not matter where you're doing this study. The study is done in the same manner. This particular corridor was in fact, subject to a study just like this in 2015. So it has not been that long ago and it was done by Somerset County. So there are things to do comparisons to in the past when we compared to the current. Same thing we did with the BI study.
Yep. So I think what's important here is there are four people in this council that sit on the Hamilton Street Advisory Board, Councilman Wright, Councilman Vasanella, you don't sit on it, but I know, Deputy Mayor, you have a lot of interest in that area, and also Councilman Alex Karazia, myself. So we sit on that advisory board. There's a lot of eyes on this and that's why I think you're getting the visibility that needs, that's required for us to take away. No offense.
No, what I'm saying is that you, while you four might sit on the Hamilton Street Advisory Board, you also have members, and there's some crossover, that sit on the land use committee that represents this entire council. So there's, I mean...
That would be the Deputy Mayor, too. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And the mayor.
So I think we've discussed this. Unless someone insists, I'd like to call for the vote.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Betaznik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Great. Any more comments?
Yes.
Any more, you're still on your council comments, Mr. Wright.
You done?
Are you done? Are you done with your council comments?
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, I...
That's a good thing. And that comes down to my council comments.
What about me?
Deputy Mayor.
Oh.
Talked too much about other things. First of all, I just want to say, great job on the Fourth of July. Amazing work, everyone, the staff particularly, because I think most of us just voted yes on the vendor, but it was a spectacular display and a great way to celebrate America. And to the ladies who opened the new Indique, I will be sure to visit and maybe purchase. We appreciate you coming and sharing your story and, you know, opening a business here in Franklin. It means a lot and that's done by me, so it's a stone's throw. And that's it.
Thank you. Sorry I missed you. Congratulations on your store. My wife wants me to come visit you, but I'm not there yet, sorry. If you were married to me, you'd want me to mellow out, too. My only other comments are, we had a resignation from the library board. One of my few superpowers is I pick the library board. Alicia ends with an H, I learned that, too. Ali, Alicia Ali. Congratulations to both of you. That's my comments, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple things. So I wanted to touch on something because I don't want there to be confusion about something. And I know that after having a lengthy discussion with Councilwoman Udine about the presentation that was done, the first presentation at the BI planning study, and I'm gonna talk briefly here. Levels of service and what levels of service mean in an intersection. And in particular, the levels of service at the intersections that were part of the study for the BI traffic study, that portion of the overall planning study. Every signalized intersection has levels of service, not just a level of service. They have levels of service. Each movement has a level of service that is determined by... ... has three movements. Service based on a... At that intersection. If you're doing it in the morning peak hour, the level of service might be C. All right? And generally, left turns are the worst movements. They generally generate the lowest level of service. So I don't want anyone, you know, as this process continues and the look at the BI, the planning study continues, there'll be much more detailed information. That first meeting was kind of like, we would call it a 30,000-foot-high look at what's going on. And the next ones, and as this progresses, we'll delve much deeper into it and hopefully we'll then come up with recommendations on what... Look at the area and as it progresses, it will delve deeper into what is exactly the conditions at all of those different locations, not only in the BI zone, in the area of Schoolhouse and Elizabeth, but also the other BI zones in town. So I just wanted to kind of cover that. And I forgot one thing. I don't know if the people from Princeton Highlands will watch this recording on TV, but they talked about the speed limit of Route 27. The speed limit of Route 27 is not within the jurisdiction of this governing body. Speed limits on state highways are established by highway regulation of the New Jersey Department of Transportation. They do require to conform to the manual, the same manual that we have to conform to and it has to be based on sound engineering practice. But if anyone wants to make a statement about the speed limit on Route 27, that should be directed to the Department of Transportation at the state. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
No council discussion items. We can now begin the actual meeting. Approval of the minutes. I present the following minutes to the Township Council for their approval. Work session, regular meeting of June 25, 2024. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
Seconded.
Moved in, seconded. Any discussion? Anyone like to make a correction? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Betaznik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Warrants. Time to pay the bills in the amount of $9,355,297.47 on June 9. I present to Township Council for payment. Do I have a motion on the warrants?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Moved in, seconded. Anyone like to pull a warrant, discuss a warrant? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onich...
Yes.
Betaznik?
Councilman Wright.
Community Development Block Grants. Yay! She's waiting. I don't know how patient... To the public?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Moved in, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public on the CBBG Annual Action Plan.
The mayor's seen no one come forward, I make a motion, close public session.
Moved in, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion is carried. Public session is... To adopt.
Some moved.
Seconded.
Been seconded. This is simply the... This is simply the- Onto the consent agenda. Items A through- Question of the meeting, I present it to Township Council for adoption. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda? They're moved.
What's on Phase 7 and how many more phases?
It will probably go on if for eternity, because by the time, so Canal Road being a very, very long road with timber rail along a lengthy portion of it, by the time that the segments are replaced at the very end of the line, it might just be the time to begin the northern end again. So-
I think there's a total of-
These are timber guide rails that are, that are, were a requirement of the DNR Canal Commission.
They're reinforced with steel.
They are. There's timber sandwiched between, with a, a piece of steel between the two timbers. If anyone really cares, it's called Merritt Parkway Guide Rail.
Is that's the guard rail they have on the Merritt?
The guide rail they have on the Merritt Parkway.
You were from Connecticut, you'd know that.
And I'm not from Connecticut, but I was exposed to it many, many years ago by the engineer at the time, Jim Pettit. And he was not happy that the DNR Canal Commission was making us put it in.
We're up three miles from Merritt Parkway. Any other discussion? Any other items people want to pull?
Just wanted to ask, what is our, adopting the Franklin Township Community Energy Plan as part of the New Jersey Board of-
So I, I think that probably Councilmember Petosnick is the best suited to answer that since it stems from a, a grant that was obtained by the township and is being completed by Tara Kenyon as part of her Sustainability Officer position with the Environmental Commission. So go ahead, Councilmember. That's it. I mean, that's what it is, right there. What I said is it's to satisfy a component of a grant that we received, a sustainability grant from Sustainable Jersey, and it's, it's to work towards, what's the word I'm looking for? Ed, better, what type of-
Renewable energy.
Renewable energy and energy efficiency.
Yes, thank you. Renewable energy.
How much was it?
I think the, I think the grant from Sustainable Jersey was 15,000.
Yeah, I believe so.
That sticks in my mind.
Thanks.
Anything else? Adam Clerk?
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Councilman Karazi?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Chaka?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petosnick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Resolutions to be voted on separately, that's because these came out after the original agenda came out. Did the last one just come out today?
Yes.
It did.
So we have 24261, other- Display at the Palace. That's quite the change. Have some-
Quite the change.
Went from 45,000 to-
I understand it. It's so, it was the project proposal from Fortress Controls, which is for the controls on all of our pump stations, the access controls, and that's the, the change in the, the contract. That's the amendment to the contract.
But from 45,000 to 200 and-
The total equipment installation is 39,240, and then there's 30 a month in maintenance costs. So I'm not quite sure what you're seeing, but I'm looking at the attachment.
It's not 45,000 to 218,000. It was 173 and change with an additional 45,000 to equal the 218,000.
Right, and that addition, that addition is what I just read, which is the attachment to the, which is the attachment to the resolution that puts the hardware cost at 39,240 and the six-door license cost an additional 30 a month.
There's been some residents who have mentioned with the Fourth of July fireworks, that there's a lot of noise with our fireworks, because we have the quote "report," which is loud. But they have commented that the Somerset, the Palace at Somerset Park has had fireworks that they're hearing and that maybe they're not adhering to the no report.
We have a representative there, a staff member is at every launching of those fireworks, and they ensure that the fireworks comply with the ordinance.
Okay. That is my question or suggestion.
There's a member of our Fire Prevention Office is required to be there when they launch their fireworks.
So any boom they're hearing is just from the explosion itself?
The other thing is, and, and they may be confusing them, I live in that, and that, so the Somerset Ballpark-
They do the Friday night.
-fireworks are every nighttime baseball game. That they're hearing is probably the Somerset Ballpark that they're hearing, and Bridgewater has no such ordinance restricting the type of fireworks that are used.
Great, thank you. Madam Clerk? Oh.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.